Twenty twenty four Board of Supervisors Work Session, we have four of our supervisors, I don't believe we will be here and this is maybe underway. So Mr. Thomas, Mr. Seeley, Mr. Underwood, myself. All right, uh, I'm going to, uh, first thing on our agenda, is any board members have any opening things they need to talk about before we go to our agenda? Item number one.
All right. I was gonna ask one question, you know, we got the newsletter and I don't know if you just got that and it's flooded in. I really thought that was worth printing and putting it some stores and in libraries. It's a lot of good info, it's a lot of stuff going on. The work's done.
I went ahead and authorized that.
Okay. Great.
All right, uh, let's go ahead to, uh, continue discussion of pay plan recommendations, Mr. Parton.
Yes, thank you Chairman Black, members of the board, uh, so we provided, uh, some additional information since, uh, last week's discussion, uh, that was requested by the board. And, uh, we have gone back, uh, one last time to meet with department heads and constitutional officers to, uh, consider their requests and their final input and, uh, we do have some further, uh, recommended adjustments to where some of the positions are rated, uh, on the new scale. Uh, you do have a copy of the, uh, the latest pay plan that, uh, includes the recommended changes. And, uh, you'll see today's date at the top of the, uh, of the schedule of an element of interest. Um, so apologize for not being able to provide that, uh, beforehand and and just dropping it on each night with the tight timeframe from last week's meeting and, uh, frankly, just with Colley's absence kind of, uh, prevented us from being able to to finalize it until now. Um, the recommended adjustments, uh, would increase the cost by, uh, approximately forty thousand dollars, uh, forty thousand two hundred eighty-nine dollars, which brings the total cost to implement the pay plan to, uh, eight hundred seventy-nine thousand eight fifty-seven. As a comparison, uh, when we implemented the the pay, uh, plan in two thousand seventeen, the cost was approximately one point one million dollars. So again, want to say emphasize we're not, we're not asking for approval tonight, uh, there's additional time to review and get directions from the board as we work through it with the, uh, approval of the budget, which again, you, uh, the earliest that can occur is the is the May twenty-eighth board meeting. Uh, I guess unless you call a special meeting between the twentieth and the twenty-eighth because the public hearings are thirteen. And you have to wait at least seven days after the public hearing before you before you adopt the budget. Uh, did want to give a little bit more perspective, um, so that the average pay increase for employees under the proposed plan is is just under eleven percent, ten point seven percent. But that's the average, so obviously, uh, some employees will see more, some will see less, but but many employees would receive, uh, what I would consider substantial raises with the the full implementation of the plan. Um, and also wanted to remind folks that, you know, in the last couple of fiscal years, we tried to focus more on the, uh, the bottom to the middle of the of the pay plan, um, in FY twenty-three, uh, employees that made less than, uh, made sixty-two thousand one hundred ninety-nine or less, uh, the increase that that they received ranged from five point one percent up to thirteen point six percent, remember it was a dollar, a dollar fifteen an hour. Um, while everyone making above that threshold got a flat five percent, um, and I think the solid waste site attendance and the litter tax, uh, received increases up to like, uh, forty-one percent. So that was FY twenty-three and FY twenty-four, uh, employees that made, uh, sixty thousand six hundred and sixty-nine or less received an increase ranging from six point one percent up to fourteen point nine percent, while employees above that received six percent. So we tried in the last couple of fiscal years to to catch some of these folks off, so, uh, those are my comments, and is Morgan, you have anything to add before we?
I do not have anything to add.
How much of the eleven percent is taking people from twelve to fifteen dollars an hour? That that looks like a fair number of employees.
I will say that, um, because of the last two increases, the one fifty and the one seventy-five in the last two years, we had not had any employees that made less than the fourteen dollars and twenty-five cents. So the the true increase would be going from fourteen twenty-five to fifteen eighteen. And I can actually give you the number of employees at that.
Yeah, I don't know what, I didn't do the numbers.
Only go to seventy-five. Seventy-five. Fifteen, nineteen.
Fifteen eighteen.
Fifteen eighteen.
Fourteen. So it's around ten percent.
So I have only seven employees going to fifteen eighteen, so only seven employees were allowed.
Okay.
And of course, those are, um, the convenient site attendees, the part-time individuals that we did bring up to speed in regards to that increase that Mr. Parton had discussed in twenty twenty-three.
They they have one more time, fifteen twenty.
Fifteen eighteen.
As as part of the paper, and as we looked at, as we looked at, I'm gonna see you added a position here somewhere, a position for, utility, um, tech help. Utilities. Have we looked at other departments? My my concern always is that there's too many single points of failure within the organization. And we can't continue to say that we're, our our expenditures, uh, to revenue were good, yet our organization is weak. So at what point do we strengthen the organization to ensure continuity, should people leave and shouldn't?
What's that? No, I was just saying frustrating or something.
And and to to make sure that, uh, the organization runs fluidly and there's, uh, a level of expectation from people that they have an opportunity to move up within the organization because there are positions available. I mean, to me, that's how you build a strong organization to ensure longevity, so I would like to see, kind of from my perspective, a few positions in the in the pay plan, uh, added. But that probably is for another discussion, so, but those are my comments.
Mr. Underwood, in response, um, the items highlighted yellow that are new positions, those are the new positions that have been, um, included in the, um, fiscal year twenty-five proposed budget.
Right.
Um, would you, are you speaking of others that you'd like to see as well?
Yeah, I'd like to see, um, a a person in in, uh, utilities under, uh, a deputy director for Mr. Shebel in the utilities, I mean, there's a, there's a lot going on in that, and there's going to be a lot going on.
There's not a lot of personal policy to go to, is that, is that being a personal policy to follow, but? As far as keeping brains, so on that. If an employee is, one employee who's trained to do a job as I was.
If for for certain positions, there there are certifications required, and I think we kind of find that found out this time that we have some single points of failure that that, um, lend us to not being as efficient and effective with people and even in terms of giving people ti- time off or, um, supporting personnel, I think stronger we are, the the better we are in the in each department, and I'd like to just, um, take a look at each department to make sure that that the department heads feel comfortable with the people who are uh, under them and are responsible, make sure the department runs smoothly, that's just my my thought.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Mr. Underwood, I I believe Mr. Shebel, uh, proposed, I think it was Assistant Director of Public Utilities in the twenty-five budget, and it was it was in till till the very end and didn't quite, didn't quite make the cut, so I just, I just wanted to say that he has proposed that.
Yeah, but it doesn't do any good, we put it in, if we say, if we take it out, well, then then it's twenty-six before you do anything. And Mr. Shebel's there for it, how many years, Mr. Shebel? Thirty. So if if you were to suddenly say, I'm I'm out of here, who's going to replace him? Who has the knowledge of the of the utilities within the county to make sure that there's no lax in service, make sure there's no laps in? You you've got a data center hopefully coming up in in, uh, on the Hora property, Hora property. But you've got, you you've got industrial and commercial activities going on, and if something were to happen, I just feel we're just not strong enough in the department, I know. And I just think that we need to sure our department, that's uncomfortable, I'll look over the paper, and again, I saw the numbers that were set, and I was feeling better about the number, but I need to really spend more time and immerse myself in the number of spending. Make sure I'm comfortable.
What is, what is the lamp? He is the, uh, Deputy Director of Public Works and Utilities. Joey could speak more, but he's he's more, uh, well versed on the public works yet. That's his strong thing. He does explain to the Joe with utilities, but his his strength isn't public. Is that Joe?
I would, yeah.
So so the sad is, I mean, Underwood is talking about, we would probably need a Deputy Director of Utilities.
Does that, do, I have a question, Mr. Shebel, would that be William Stanley at this point?
So the way we look at it, we would hire an Assistant Director, um, and then give them a few years and hoping we feel move them up two or three years to a Deputy Director. Um, Ted very strong on administrative functions when it comes to, uh, helping me write memos and putting, uh, paths together, budgets, um, and those type of things, but when it comes to any kind of commercial, industrial, um, anything to do with really the the nuts and bolts of of the water and and actually working with, uh, economic development on a daily basis, there's nobody to fill that gap at all, so. Um, you know, I was on on the phone today with two different companies that were looking to come to County, uh, and we're talking with, uh, the group that we are, that are reselling in Belmont, where they got five hundred twenty homes. I'm on the phone today, you know, walking through everything with them before go to the engineers for review, so I'm the one who does that, so William's strong in the operation, so in the field, when that's, you know, the bolts hit the road, uh, in in the field, Williams got the field, he doesn't have the experience in the office. Um, he did time, he's spending really doing the field and making sure that we've got water and the sewer's going where it's supposed to.
Which is a big thing for that position.
Can I make a suggestion maybe for like, like an organizational, when you look in the, it's like an organizational flow chart of county administrator and the department heads? Um, is there a way that that could be updated so that way, for example, um, if if the flow chart is, so if someone, if 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 one of our department heads were to retire suddenly or had a medical issue or whatever the case may be, had to leave for emergency or whatever, um, and we had to, there's someone at least to step up, is there a way we can look at that and make sure that we have, um, something the board brings the board to be, yes, continuity, so that way there's no weaknesses, then someone is trained, you know, below you and below them, so that way we can move forward with certificates and so forth, so that way it's kind of, uh, we're not in a situation where, uh, we're in in trouble all of a sudden, um, and I'm sure the Sheriff's Department and and the Fire Department, um, BMS have have something in in place for that, too. Um, but you got, you got the IR chief.
Yeah, right, right, Deputy.
So you guys have something like that in place, don't you?
Well, they here as far as county, who do you go, Deputy Chief or not?
Right, right.
Okay, we'll step up if I'm down.
Yep.
Right. Everybody's about the same.
That is the number two. I've been saying get somebody for Pam for long.
Who's who's helping her, who's helping her, I mean, these are people who know all of these, but I mean.
Yeah, we're not, yeah, we're not gonna solve them.
I'm not trying to.
But, um, so that way for next part of season, we know exactly, and then the department heads could be in charge of what certification people know below them, step up and so forth. Uh, that would be a big help to us, you know, and that if that could come to us.
Want to wait till next year?
I don't want to wait till next year.
No, 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 but in the budget, I mean, I think the flow chart needs to, we need the responsibilities, and if we need to, for for the budget season, I don't think we're gonna get, do anything, but if we need to supplementally, in the fall, it's becomes really important, I think we can add a position. If it's to be necessary, I I'm not sure that we know right now what positions we need or don't need, so let's really look at.
We will work with anyone as well, yeah. We know we need to. We know we need to help, like, um, help Pam get the minutes out, we've been trying to do that.
Yeah, that that happens on the twenty.
Okay.
Yeah, but we we've been solving that problem.
But, uh, Joey could hit the lottery tomorrow. You know, we used to say he could hit by a buck, but, you know, if he hits the lottery, it's much more positive.
Right.
And he just disappeared, and we'd be stuck. So how would we handle that right now? Because Reggie said, we got a lot of stuff going on in utility.
Same here with Mr. Wilson, though.
But but then then I I think.
I mean, that's why, that's why I'm saying like that, as far as, as far as, we need to look at it holistically, not just say, oh, we're doing this, this, and I think we need to look at it holistically, try to solve it holistically. Our budget season is, I mean, we we more of a budget probably next, next week, right?
Now, again, it'll be the twenty.
Twenty, twenty, you're still talking, giving staff a couple of weeks to try to solve this, I'm not sure you can solve this in a couple of weeks.
But you can solve a couple, you can put a couple of positions in the in the budget, whether we have, not that, not that you fill those positions immediately, but you start, that's those, those are placeholders. So we now begin to look to build that, um, support within your organization. I'm just, I just don't want to wait till it's an emergency, then once again, we're stuck.
And I can't in an emergency, it'll take longer.
But I think, I think three critical positions, as you said, Mr. Wilson, who's back.
I've said that a long time, a long time. No, I'm.
You know, so so.
Mr. Chairman.
My idea is while we're crunching it, put the position in there.
Yeah.
Add it to the budget and then if it's fit.
Is that the way the board wants to go, though, you add, you got those positions or talk about them?
I I think we want to add those, because it's not like you can't fund
Right.
either of those positions right now, and we probably wouldn't hire somebody for six months.
If we don't, it just goes back to the budget next year, I mean, just.
It would be money, I agree, put the money. Utilities and, is there another, is another department that's, that's, uh, Blair and.
In.
There's the person coming on the twenty.
If any department that are here, if you guys have, if you guys have concerns about your department, and you know that you you can justify it right now, um, certainly give, bring it to Mr. Parton, and let's talk about how you can make your department stronger, what does it take to make your department efficient? You you can't rely on the board to know every, you know, the old saying, the squeaky wheel gets the most oil, so give us an opportunity to look at something, then we see that it's not functioning as it should, we're we're a, you know, multi-million dollar organization, we we should be able to function at the point and not make decisions on the fly, wait till emergencies happen, we should be prepared for emergencies and be able to take care of our folks. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, is there anyone else? Uh, this.
I was just gonna ask, for the two positions, um, that we would be adding or that I would need to potentially get numbers for would be a Deputy Director of Utilities, not a, an Assistant, are we? What Mr. Shebel had requested was an Assistant Director of Utilities.
But you would, you should probably talk to Mr. Shebel specifically to to find tune whether it's a Deputy Director, which will take longer to hire, or an Assistant, which we can train.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, and the second position that you stated.
Um, with Mr. Wilson back.
Mr. Wilson's back, so I will get with Mr. Wilson as well, thank you.
Thank you.
I think in that case, it's not another Mr. Wilson, it's probably a junior Mr. Wilson.
Well, I was gonna look at this a little more holistically, because we have a Director of Tourism who's part-time. And I don't know what Kathy's plans are, but I don't want to leave Mr. Wilson with, I think we need to look at his department, and maybe it's one person that works some with him and some with tourism, so we get a good blend, because Gary did tourism for a long time.
I have no problem with that, but the thing of it is, is it's like, I mean, that's a really important position.
I understand, I also know that you can't.
It has to be certified, and that's.
I also know that you can't share all that data immediately with somebody, because
Right.
there have been plenty of counties that to hire somebody, and a year and a half later, they're gone, and so is the whole rolodex. And they're they're devastated, so I'm just saying, if you ease in with tourism, you hire somebody that's capable of doing both, and then they're in the office and they know what's going on, you were sales, gotta know.
Yeah, but I don't necessarily think tourism has that that value in terms of, uh, return on investment for the county, you know?
We'll see, but apologies for being late, but what's the effect of a little tourism?
The economic development.
No, utilities, no, Mr. Wilson.
The second position.
Utilities, oh, Joey.
That one I know, what's this one?
No, no, we were saying, we were saying Deputy Director for Mr. Wilson or a Junior Assistant for Mr. Wilson. Mr. Seeley just said add tourism, and and I'm saying I don't think tourism, at this point in time, has the return on investment in the county. Probably it's our fault, but it doesn't have as much return as economic development.
So. I understand Joey needs an assistant in the children. Mr. Wilson needs someone to help with tourism.
We're saying maybe.
You're saying, you have to request.
Right, right, this is us talking.
Not him.
So this, this, uh, so, um, Kathy's job, she goes full time.
That's.
It's not a discussion, this is us talking, not, this is no input from anybody.
Okay, that's why I have to work to think that.
Right, 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 this is.
Well, the genesis of this, the genesis of this was the fact that, like, we we're experienced right now, for example, when Mr. Colley being out, our administration is stretched. If Mr. Shebel were to be out, like, you know, he's got skill, a skill set, who would step up? If Mr. Wilson were to be out, he's got a skill set, who who could step up to do that job when, you know, that person is out or, you know, whatever, whatever reason? So, you know, we would have a, we would have a huge problem, you know, if Mr. Wilson was to sit in front of that area, we we wouldn't have anyone to really take that job. So.
Right, well, I I think for this year and for this meeting, my opinion would be that we need to do wonderful requests and and make decisions on those. But it certainly would be a wonderful idea, Mr. Wilson, if we definitely different department heads as to what they think of future needs on next year.
I think they may request.
We're gonna start getting in the budget next year, so we.
But they may request year after year, and we've cut budgets and we changed budgets, and we said we can't afford this position, we can't afford this position. And then people look at us like we're stupid when you say you have a five million dollar revenue over expenditure, and they say, why can't you do that?
Sometimes we should be proactive and try to react.
Right, we should react.
We maybe look at the, if if these two positions and then as a staff, look at any other, uh, the the more holistic, if anything, we identify from that.
Yeah, because we can add it anytime, it's not like the guns toward.
Right.
So let's let's make sure we're getting what they need. Look, I think tourism is a lot different from what was just months ago.
Okay, all right, next on the, does anyone want to continue talking of the pay plan, or are we kind of, are we all set with the pay plan?
Yeah. I know what it's called.
All right, um, with that, then other action, what's that?
How are we doing with reconciliation on on revenue versus expenditure and allocation and?
We, yes, yes, sir, um, we have gotten through, uh, December is what is, um, posted, I know I prepared a second quarter report for you guys that did not have the revenues in there, so on the thirteenth meeting, on Monday, we will be providing a report that has the revenues and the expenditures for the second quarter.
We'll have that before the meeting, correct, let's take a look at it.
Yes, sir, that will be included in the board package.
Yes.
Um, and the, we spoke with the treasurer on last week in regards to being able to get the third quarter to you on the twenty-eighth, and she felt as if she would not be able to have that completed prior to then. I believe she's done with January and February pretty much, but March, she said that she didn't think that she would have available prior to the date that Keystone, the software system, um, said that they would need it, and I believe that date was either yesterday or today, they needed it prior to that timeframe in order to get it in the system by next week so that we could include it in the twenty-eighth package. So what I'm understanding, they're doing everything downstairs to get all information updated and reconciled, um, so that we're able to provide that. I'll continue to ask in regards to what she has completed and what, what if we can get anything for the twenty-eighth in regards to that third quarter report.
Right.
I'm sorry.
Can we go at least to February, though?
Yes, well, they have pulled it, I think they have extracted the data from B A I, but they would have had to get it to them by today in order to have it imported into Keystone, but we'll do everything that we can in order to get that in.
Okay. All right. All right, so that's it, does anyone else have any other questions? Um, all right, um, yeah, yeah, no, it's other, um, number two. Um, other items identified by board members? I need a motion to go into closed section.
I'm going to move to first board to meet in place. First bill, exception of section two point two, net two seven one one, page one, to discuss personal matters relating to participation of children's boy. No plan of the water, I mean. Stop. That's the second one.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right, I have a motion to go into closed section, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second, and then a discussion, all votes in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, we are, will be in closed section, so we'll just stay right here.
I'm.
Motion.
Any discussion on motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Uh, Mr. So, uh, Mr. Thomas.
You gotta read this first. Yep.
Okay. I notice that Caroline County Board since President certified that it could best to these four persons' knowledge, only public assistance matters lawfully accepted from the uh, open meeting required in a dispute of law with discussed in closed meeting, to which some interpretation applies, and only such public matters as were identified in the motion convened in the closed set meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the board.
Second, uh, you have a second, all those in favor, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Uh, Thomas, you so certified?
I so certified.
Mr. Sealy.
I so certified.
I'm trying to, I feel clearly, plus long.
I so certified.
I so certified. Alright, I have a motion here, in recognition of his superlative efforts and work during his long career with Caroline County, including on numerous occasions creating significant cost savings for the county and its public projects. I move that this board award Mr. Kevin Lightman a one-time bonus in the amount discussed by the board in closed session.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Alright, I have a motion, a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright.